Okay, having a quorum, I would like to call the April 8, 2010 meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Ms. Weiss, if you could please call the roll.
Chair Bartlet, present. Vice Chair Justice, absent. Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Jacobs?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first item will be the preliminary matters. First up will be the review of our draft minutes of March 18th. Are there any questions or comments from members of the commission? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. On page three, I think there's been a misspelling of Mr. Zink's first name, if I understand his first name to be Paul.
Yes.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Any others?
Mr. Chair, also on page three, down toward the bottom of the page, is a misspelling of Kellam DeForest's name. It's K.E.L.L.A.M.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? I have one on page one, under the motion. We should use Ms. Jacobs' last name as opposed to her first name as second of the motion.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay, and also the Resolution 002-10, which was for 825 Delavina.
There's a very minor typo on, oh, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Which page are you on?
Page four of the resolution. Item nine, it says, "Front parking spaces. ABR will study areas to which the front parking spaces might be relocated." At that point, there was just one space, so that S should...
You're correct, there was only one front space.
So it should be just say space instead of spaces.
Any other comments or revisions? Okay, I'd like to have a motion for approval of the minutes and the reso, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Weiss, are there any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
Chair Bartlet, there are no changes for today's agenda. Thank you.
About announcements and appeals?
Yes, I have a few announcements. I'll begin with the project resolution you just reviewed, 825 Delavina. The city did receive an appeal of the Planning Commission approval of that project, and the council has set a date of hearing for May 11th to consider that appeal. Also, the project at 617 Bradbury had gone before the city council on an appeal. At the hearing, the council directed the applicant to return to the Architectural Board of Review to reduce the massing of parts of the building and to study the architectural style for better compatibility. That project has been back to the ABR twice, and in their last review, they found it very responsive, and they had a positive response back to the council. So that hearing will be set; it has not yet, but for May 25th, for the Bradbury project to return. Also, wanted to inform the commission that on Tuesday, April 20th, the City Council and Redevelopment Agency Board will hear a presentation from Brian Bossy, the Redevelopment Agency Director, and Sarah Connect from the City Attorney's Office on the report that was given to you all regarding the status and future of the Redevelopment Agency. And we just wanted to let you know that that discussion's happening. You may want to monitor it, or based on your interest in discussion, if you'd like to send a representative to the meeting, that would be welcome, but we wanted you to know.
What date was that again?
That's Tuesday, April 20th.
Okay.
It's certainly your option as to how you'd like to monitor that or attend. However, on the 825 Delavina, we'd like to have a representative from the Planning Commission present at that appeal. And at the other item, 617 Bradbury, I recall Commissioner Jacobs being there, and then I think Commissioner Lodge as well, yes. So...
Do you need people assigned to that one as well?
If you'd like to, if Commissioners Jacobs and Lodge would like to continue to follow that, that's fine.
Right.
They both did address the council at the preliminary, the prior hearing.
Mr. Chair, what was the date again for that one?
Bradbury has yet to be set, but there's a recommendation for May 25th. I think it'll be on one of the soon upcoming council agendas to set the date. May 25th for Bradbury and May 11th for 825 Delavina. You could make appointments at a future PC meeting as well, if you'd like, instead of today.
Okay, we may do that, or we...
Okay.
Yes.
In the meantime, I would be interested in at least sitting in on the April 20th discussion about the Redevelopment Association, and just to give a heads-up in case other commissioners want to go to that, so that we could record that appropriately, if we reach the unnecessary number for noticing. Should be an interesting discussion.
Okay, and I think perhaps we'll wait on the appointment unless somebody's really anxious to represent the 825 Delavina, since we don't have everybody in attendance today. So... Any other comments or announcements? Yes, Ms. Larson, or Jacobs.
Otherwise known as Charmaine.
Right.
The, I noticed on the upcoming related items, several appearances of the medical marijuana What's the status of that? Is it just going to go and go and go? Is that the current plan?
That's what it's been, Mike, but the medical marijuana ordinance amendments are at the council's ordinance committee, and the next meeting is for Tuesday, April 13th. I'm hope, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but...
Well, I'm looking at the schedule you handed out, and so then it looks like it goes from ordinance committee to council on April 27th. Is that still true?
Well, that, that is not as certain. Our hope is that at the April 13th ordinance committee meeting, the ordinance committee will feel that they've wrapped up this phase of their discussion, and that it would return to the city council. But having heard from the city attorney the other day, I think he finds the 27th to possibly be a problematic date for him. But once the ordinance committee is done with their discussion, which we think could be the 13th, then it would return to city council and as a recommended ordinance for introduction, and then they're, we're showing here that subsequently you scheduled the adoption hearing, too.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right, with that, I'll close announcements and appeals and open public comment, and this will be for items that are not on today's agenda, if there's anybody that would like to speak to something other than our next item. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to our first discussion item, which is the Coast Village Road Guidelines, and Ms. Weiss will be doing the staff presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bartlet. This is a discussion item for today, an opportunity for the city planning commission to hear from the Coast Village Business Association with review and discussion of their draft guideline document. And then there is a second related item that staff would like to discuss with the commission regarding a new administrative procedure coordinated between the city planning division and the county planning and development department. So as way of background, the Coast Village Business Association, for some time now, they're an active association and are very interested in all the ongoings in the Coast Village Road area, and have, from time to time, had engagement with the city, various city representatives. And while there were some pending projects going on in the Coast Village Road area, namely the project at the corner of Olive Mill Road and Coast Village Road, the association became more interested in discussing projects with potential applicants and amongst themselves and with the city's review bodies. Also, around the same time, we're in the community initiating the general plan update, asking members of the community throughout, what are their goals and interests and things that they value in the community, concern for change, and how they would like to shape or direct change in the future. We've encouraged the Coast Village Business Association to have a active role and voice in the Plan Santa Barbara process as well. So as provided in background to your, for your discussion today, is a memo with two attachments. One is a set of documents related to the Coast Village Business Association's effort, which included holding two town hall meetings. I'm not sure if anyone on the commission was in attendance at either, any of those meetings, but they were well-publicized, and a number of people throughout the community were invited and attended, as did some various city officials and city council people. That's background to the development of their draft guideline document, Proposed Coast Village Road Semi-Rural Commercial Overlay District Architectural Guidelines and Development Standards Document. They were working on this document, again, in late '08, and we encouraged them to submit it as public comment into the Plan Santa Barbara process. This was, I mean, we've received many quality comments from various groups throughout the community, but this was a very unique way to say, "This is what we value in Santa Barbara, and specifically in Coast Village Road, and this is how we'd like to see the future of that road developed." So there was a brief statement made at a city council meeting where they submitted this information. I think the commission was well-aware of it at that time as well, and the direction was, "Consider this in the general plan update process." I, as the planning manager, have had many discussions as well with the Coast Village Business Association, and have tried to explain how we're responding at this time to their proposal. And I think there's an interest, certainly on their part, they would love to see the city fully embrace these, get moving, have them, had been adopted yesterday. But I've tried to explain to both those who would really like to see this move forward quickly, and those who might be concerned, that it looks like this is some form of official discussion we're having here, and where, what is the status of these guidelines, that we're really in a general planning, general policy mode with respect to this document. We don't consider this to be an official initiated city undertaking at this time to further develop and adopt these guidelines. However, we did, through the public review process, develop additional discussions about the importance of the city's unique neighborhoods, and certainly the city's interest in improving our design review and development review process. You will note in the recently released draft general plan, here, I have a copy, and appropriately we can refer to the different policies within the proposed general plan that call for development of specific, unique area guidelines. And certainly, we believe that the Coast Village Road area would be one where specific guidelines would be appropriate. And within their draft guideline document, there are two areas that really fall under the category of development standard, and that is their interest in seeing possible change to the number of stories allowed. Right now, in the Coast Village Road area, there is a unique zoning. It is the C1 zone, and that exists only in this area of the city, and it has a three-story, 45-height limit. Also, within their draft document, they introduced the concept that a floor-to-lot area ratio, perhaps at the .60, would be an appropriate standard to consider for the Coast Village area. Those type of changes would really require a zoning ordinance amendment, as well as a local coastal plan amendment. So when you look at where we are in terms of the general plan, we have addressed the idea that the Coast Village Road area would merit special and unique design guidance. We also have policies in the general plan talking about enhanced design review programs and tools, such as form-based coding and floor area ratios as something for future study, additional consideration. I know the Planning Commission and some of your general plan work sessions, we've, we all have got really excited about that idea, and architect Tom Bole, who is a major contributor to this effort with the Coast Village Business Association, also presented his thoughts and information on floor-to-lot area ratios at one of our Plan Santa Barbara work sessions as well. So the general plan document does respond at a general plan level, recognizing that we have an active business association, and that there is a desire to continue to carefully consider development in the Coast Village Road area and look at new, possible new tools. Also, in the draft EIR for the general plan, we have considered a lower-growth alternative that does look at the possibility of lowering building heights. That was direction we received from both the Planning Commission and council when we initiated that process for the EIR. So that has been our response to date, specifically to the inclusion of this significant public comment into the general plan process. However, what about just today? Really, today, the purpose of the discussion today is to allow the community, this community group, to have dialogue with the Planning Commission without a project before you, just so that they, they have gone about expressing, as I said, their vision and desire for this area in a way that, when you read through sections of the guidelines, look very similar to existing city guidelines. And there's quite an overlap, actually, between the city's recently adopted design criteria and the urban design guidelines, perhaps the pedestrian master plan, and other guidelines within their draft. And what we are hoping is to enhance their participation in the city's review process with better understanding from our boards and commissions about what this, what these folks are interested in. We held a similar discussion at the Architectural Board of Review this week on Monday, because all projects going out, commercial or multiple-family projects out in the Coast Village Road area, would go to the Architectural Board of Review also. At the Architectural Board of Review, there were questions as to, "Well, this is interesting, but what does this mean? Is this some form of a new city official guideline?" And I needed to clarify for everyone, no, this is, as the agenda states, a discussion item for better understanding and opportunity for this group to present the matter to the Planning Commission and ABR. They are not, this is not even an official first step to initiate this as a project. As I explained, it's been included in the general plan. But again, I believe that it is a good opportunity, outside of a specific project review, to have a discussion about that area and have in your, in your mind's eye an understanding of what this group's work has been about. So the second item is an effort that also somewhat came out of the recent city's review of the project at the corner of Olive Mill Road and Coast Village Road. There was an interest expressed by the council that the staff coordinate more with the county on review of proposals out there. And also, just again, encourage public participation in our planning process, be it that the resident happens to live on one side of the city-county line or another, that, that really doesn't matter when we're looking at new development in your neighborhood, or an important part of the community that you use, and we'd like to hear from area residents. And so we wanted to enhance the opportunity for residents in the Montecito area to make comments on projects going through city review, and working with the planning and development staff. Diane Black from the county is here. Paul Casey and I had some, a meeting with representatives of the Montecito Planning Commission, Montecito Board of Architectural Review, and Montecito Association, as well as Coast Village Business Group, and came up with, staff really proposed this outline, and we discussed it amongst that group, that for projects, major projects in the Coast Village Road area that are destined to come to the Planning Commission, we would notify people early, as we do anyway, but we would include in that notification these, these interest groups, and so that people would be aware of the projects early, and at stage where the project is deemed complete, that's the point that we feel where we have a pretty good handle, that this is a real project, and that we understand the parameters for it. City staff would work with the applicant and county staff and schedule a discussion item before the Montecito Planning Commission. And the purpose for that meeting is so that the Montecito community can come to a familiar forum, and that people very concerned about planning and development in the area, the Montecito Planning Commission, would be able to discuss the project and forward comments for staff, the applicant, and then ultimately the Planning Commission to consider during the review of that project. So again, both of these items have raised people's eyebrows. They're like, "I'm not sure. How, what does this mean? What, is it a recommendation? Is there an outcome? Are these guidelines real?" I just want to say that we just are interested in public dialogue and input in our planning process, and we've put out this new process as something we want to try. We don't know that it'll work exactly how it will work, and we don't know if it'll work the same way on every project, but there's, as I say, definitely an interest and a willingness to try this. As far as development pending in the Coast Village Road area, we have had limited contact with property owners and potential applicants out there. I note in the memo that we had a contact regarding the Vons area for only aesthetic and parking lot landscaping, and, you know, enhancements like that. So that wouldn't necessarily be a project that would be coming to the Planning Commission, but we do have a pre-application for a Chevron station on the south side of Coast Village Road that is considering a demolition and reconstruction, and it would involve a conditional use permit brought before this commission. So that may be the first project where we run through this new comment procedure with the Montecito Planning Commission. So that's an overview of the two Coast Village Road-related items for your discussion today, available to answer any questions, and we have a number of people present who'd like to speak. Tom Bole, and, okay, I'm not sure if you turned in a speaker slip, but I think, yeah, Tom Bole, Jan Atkins, and then I'll hand the rest over to you.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Great. With that, I will open public comment. And we'll let Tom Bole lead off, since he's really leading the charge on this. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you very much, Commissioners and Chair. This really started four years ago, when the Coast Village Business Association, pardon? This started...
Mr. Chair? This is a discussion item, so I wasn't sure, are you going to limit the speakers to two minutes, or start, just allow?
No, I think there's so few people here, we can really let it run longer. I think it'd be good to have the discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, I just wanted to give you a brief overview. This started four years ago, when the Coast Village Business Association approached me and said that I was an architect and familiar with how city planning worked, and that, would I help in trying to craft some sort of guidelines or some sort of tools that the city could use to deal with what we were concerned at the time, or the association was concerned at the time, is the potential overbuilding of Coast Village Road. At the same time, the gas station project on the corner of Olive Mill and Coast Village Road was just in the beginning process, and that was kind of strengthening the need for this. In this process, I was also, and currently helping to rewrite the Historic Landmark Commission Guidelines on a subcommittee for that group, and I've served as a former Historic Landmark Commissioner. And so I wanted to try and see if we couldn't take a look at what tools we had for Coast Village Road. And I was surprised to see we really didn't have any tools at all, other than the zoning ordinance itself at that time. The urban grid design guidelines, which have a lot of great stuff in it about pedestrian scale and pedestrians, simply doesn't apply to Coast Village Road. And so at the time, there are now, I think, some more guidelines with the ABR about compatibility, but at the time we started this process, there really weren't. So I brought up a concept of FAR as a discussion item, and it seemed to resonate well at our public town hall meetings. And so we've been continuing to kind of try and see if there, if, we've been explained that it's too difficult to change the height limits or the number of stories in a short period of time due to staff's involvement in Plan Santa Barbara, that there may be another way to either through a guideline or some sort of tool, kind of deal with the size, bulk, and scale of Coast Village Road. In our analysis of this guideline, we did an analysis of the floor area ratio that's on the ground right now in Coast Village Road, and it's about 25 percent. The current zoning allows about 250 percent. So we're really looking at zoning being about 10 times what the actual on-the-ground building density is. And we feel that the road is probably near gridlock as far as traffic goes. I know there's currently water problems through the, through the Montecito Water District, that we felt that it really wasn't appropriate to have staff simply tell the planners, "This is the maximum you can build. You can build three stories and 45 feet." That that wouldn't be appropriate if it started occurring all the way down the street. I know right now there are six vacant parcels, or old gas station parcels, that are either on the market or have, or just recently sold. And so there certainly is going to be coming in the next year or two, a number of projects. And my experience has been that most of those start with the, "How big can I build? And how much is this value?" And so what concerns me is that we're going to be seeing three-story and 45-foot-high structures, and I think it's a little bit like Tripoli Street. I think we could lose the charm we have. And I know that the neighboring community, and the business owners, and even many of the property owners, think there's something special about Coast Village Road. It's, it's unique, it's not like downtown Santa Barbara, and there's a charm there. And that charm creates, as Danny Kopis, our president, says, I'm sorry, he's not here yet, he's, he's trying to make the meeting, but, but it's, it's a business, it's a business, I'm trying to, there's economic value to its small-scale charm right now. People come just to shop on Coast Village Road, they spend the weekend in Danny's family's hotel, and it's, and it's an attraction. And that if we lose that by, by increasing the density of the buildings or giving a sense of canyonization, I think we've lost that, we've lost an important step. So we're really hoping the association is, and is hoping to work with city planning through Plan Santa Barbara and your commission. Is there a tool, are there some sort of tools we can put in place sooner rather than later that will help address the potential density of that? In our plan, we proposed an FAR .6, and your commission may be able to say it should be 1.0, or something like that. But it seems, .6 is two times the existing density, 1.0 would be three times the existing density, but we, as a community, don't want to see stoplights, we don't want to see a four-lane road, we don't want to lose what the Montecito community thinks is their semi-rural village, and so we're really hoping that we can create a dialogue through this process and use some of what we've started here as a tool. And I'm here to help, help with that dialogue. That's, that's our history and kind of where we are now.
Well, I'm sure we'll have questions for you after we get through all the other speakers.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jan Atkins, to be followed by Laura Bridley.
Hello, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Jan Atkins, Atkins Hotel Advisory. I've been a resident of Montecito for 25 years, almost, and a resident, shall we say, around the corner from Coast Village, about 14 years. And I've been on the Coast Village Business Association as a board member for over 12 years, just got off the board recently. So there's a history there. Coast Village Business Association, or Coast Village, is a neighborhood district, it's a special district among several in Santa Barbara, that has its own personality, character, comfort zone, and tourist draw. Coast Village Road is the lower village to lovely, tranquil Montecito in the foothills below the San Inez Mountains. There's an expectation of low-key ambiance, à la semi-rural, that brings the community and revenue to this area. Coast Village Road is within two blocks of the Biltmore Hotel and Butterfly Beach. It's below Montecito Peak... It's below Montecito Peak. It's an attractive stop for locals and visitors to Montecito and beyond. This upscale, low-density retail hotel and business area, once owned by Montecito, is now under the guardianship of the City of Santa Barbara. If you are concerned, as the city is, about performance, it's only the upscale segment of hotels right now that is reporting increases in all three performance metrics. This may be true of retail as well, just as an economic aside. As this is a unique district, C1, we hope that Coast Village ambiance will be protected through a land use designation such as a reasonable floor area ratio, whereby the property owner has a choice of what to build within a framework of principles and tools that are initially set forth in the Coast Village Road guidelines as you have before you. The goal should be a continuing balance of architectural beauty, tranquility, and the desire for this semi-rural ambiance at a reasonable building height limit of two to three stories, a third story could be that half-story going down the hill towards the circle, depending on view channels, light, and scale. A reasonable floor area for this destination district is, let's say, up to 100% of land area, with setbacks for paseos, ground-floor courtyards. Because of this concern of traffic now streaming through at all hours, parking is a big issue. Renovations and developments should provide their own parking, preferably underground or sight unseen. Coast Village uniquely represents a different attraction to local residents and to visitors from LA, the East, and Europe, who come to the chic shops, historic hotels, and restaurants noted for excellent food and service and for less noise in a low-key setting. Coast Village is a mecca for walking and biking as well. It's a mixed use with residential. It's important that Coast Village, as C1, be recognized as a special commercial neighborhood use, according to these guidelines, which have been presented to the city council to be incorporated in Plan Santa Barbara and ultimately in Santa Barbara's general plan. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Laura Bridley, to be followed by Doug Fell.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. My name is Laura Bridley, and I am here on behalf of the Montecito Association today. I serve on their land use committee. And I also happen to grow up not far from Coast Village Road, around the corner from Commissioner Schwartz's home. And certainly, Coast Village Road is unique. It's also part of the Montecito community that feels it is part of its community and not the city's sole authority. So there is a great overlap here, and the Montecito Association really appreciates all of the work that the Coast Village Business Association did. There was some participation on certain members of the association at their forums, but the association, as of today, hasn't had a chance to really go through these guidelines in detail. Nonetheless, we support the concept of it, and in particularly, we really are pleased to see the coordinated city review process that's in your packet, and we would encourage that that gets started right away. I don't know that there's any reason why it isn't going to be implemented immediately anyway, but that seems like an excellent step towards regional planning and better public dialogue so that we don't stumble upon something like what happened with 1298 Coast Village Road. The coordinated process also clearly furthers some of the goals in your general plan update, the Plan Santa Barbara, particularly number five, the advanced regional thinking, and number six, encouraging public involvement. With respect to the draft guidelines, the Montecito Association looks forward very much to working with the Coast Village Business Association and through the Plan Santa Barbara process to review those in detail so that hopefully we can provide a more meaningful comment on those at a later date. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Doug Fell, be followed by Michael Chenoweth.
Chairman Bartlet, members of the Commission, I'm Doug Fell. One of the first questions, well, let's go back so you know who I am, and fair disclosure, I represent the owner of the property at the corner of Coast Village Road and Olive Mill, and have gone through many hearings on that project, as you well know. But, and attended both of these, the meetings that are listed in the materials that have been given to you. And I'd like to start by saying that, at least in our view, the Coast Village Business Association is a tenants' association and not a landowners' association. They're not looking out for the landowners, they're looking out for their properties. Mr. Kopas is an exception to that, but that's, he owns the two hotels that are located on Coast Village Road. And I'd also like to note, so that you know why people aren't here, is that no notice was given to any property owners about this hearing. So you either were, are smart enough or lucky enough to read the agendas every week and know what's going to be on the agenda, and that's the only reason I knew about it, is I read the agenda every week. So the property owners are not here, they're not here to speak on their behalf, and because they don't even know this is really here. Second issue is the, to me, the materials that have been presented to you try and use words that I think are buzzwords, which are intended to scare people, which is to say pressures similar to those on Chapala Street. Well, Chapala Street has somehow become like the boogeyman. Let's call in the boogeyman and we'll scare everybody off. Let's say pressures like Chapala Street. I don't think there's anything to indicate that there are pressures on Coast Village Road like Chapala Street. The next issue I'd like to talk about is that the entire materials keep referring to Coast Village Road as being semi-rural. Now, I don't know what semi-rural is truly, but the ABR, when they listened to this presentation on Monday, one of the ABR members whose name I didn't get was very specific in saying, what do you mean this is semi-rural? This isn't semi-rural. This is developed. And I brought along some materials that we prepared before on our other project. We don't have a secretary there, okay. If you'll stand there so I can say what they are first. One is to show you the size of properties and how many four-story buildings there are. On the mic. Show you how many stories there are, properties that are four-story and then three-story, to show you a picture of a large four-story building right on Coast Village Road. They like to say it's set back, but I mean, it's right on the street, in my view. And then some other large buildings that are along that street. And I even, I believe the design art may have designed those, correct, those right there. So I think you know what size they are and how they fit and whether they're semi-rural or not. This isn't semi-rural. This is, this was Highway 101. This is the main street to our community and until we got a freeway. And then all of a sudden, it got moved off the freeway, or got moved off of being the Finally, the proposal to reduce the height limit, I mean, we've been there, and I'm not sure where you're going on your general plan, and I hope you're not going there. But we've been there on a, we're going to reduce the height limit, and we had Measure B, and we had a vote of the people, and what did the people say? They said no. No Measure B. And I think the same thing applies to here. We don't need to reduce heights in order to accomplish attractive, good-looking buildings. And then another thing that, these are just things that are in these materials that kind of, I struggle with, is it says that Coast Village Road most closely resembles the Upper Montecito Village. Now, they are so different, there isn't one building in the Upper Montecito Village, at least to my knowledge, that's over two stories, and that's appropriate. But as I've showed you in the materials, there are four-story buildings on Coast Village Road, there are three-story buildings. So I mean, I find the materials that have been presented to you to be somewhat misleading. I don't have a problem with design guidelines. I think, I mean, we've adopted them in all of the community, and that they help our ABR and help our HLC provide you with good information on design, because they're the design review boards. And I think we can continue to rely on that to protect Coast Village Road. We don't need a whole new set, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Michael Chenoweth, to be followed by Danny Kopas.
Well, I, hello. I don't usually go up and speak, but I concur with Mr. Fell that I was surprised to learn that this was going on, and a number of property owners on the street asked for me to say something. And there's a genuine concern about there being a change from a two-story, from a three-story design, because a lot of that involves the future development of Coast Village Road and the change that will occur over the years. And it's so difficult to develop a property that you go through years of ABR and changes that the design is a community design from the get-go, when you end up with the end result. And to prevent an owner from having the ability to allow an architect to design the flow of the street and the buildings that are on the street is debilitating, and it's not fair to the owners of the properties or the community who would benefit from good designs. And that's really all I have to say, but I think it would be beneficial to notice everyone involved in the properties and the neighborhoods if something like this is going to happen, because there was a surprise to a lot of property owners, and they asked me to come and talk, so.
Thank you very much for coming. Danny Kopas, please. He'll be our last speaker.
I hope everyone's doing well today. I just have a few comments. I think it's important when people are talking about Coast Village Road, and maybe some of these people do live and frequent the area, but I think it's important that we are hearing from the people that actually live there and work there, not people that maybe have a business there necessarily, but then go away. Of course, they're important too, but we have to hear from the community as well, and definitely not, you know, people who represent other people. Once you start tearing it away, you get less and less, you get further and further away from what the core community, I think, wants in the area, and that seems to me to be probably most important. As far as the Business Association, I think we've done a very good job, actually, in trying to incorporate everybody. One of the things as President that I've tried to do is take it from being strictly a business association to incorporating the property owners, incorporating the community. There are people that have condos and apartments on that road, too. And also incorporating the surrounding community, trying to establish a good relationship with Montecito Association. All of these things work together to create a better environment, and the input of all of these people and entities create a better environment. So we absolutely have incorporated or tried to incorporate property owners, as we did with our town hall meetings. We let the community know as well as we could, the property owners as well as we could, the business owners as well as we could, and people chose whether or not they wanted to come and participate in those. And the vision plan was simply taking all of the comments that we heard and putting them into a readable format for the city and for property owners and for business owners and for the community to read and understand. And we had a second one, in case, you know, people weren't able to make the first one. We've definitely tried, and we will continue to try, to incorporate everyone and to establish something that works well for everybody. And what I mean by that is a vision plan or guidelines for the area, they need to work well for the community that mostly uses and enjoys the area, they need to work well for tourists who come to visit the area, this is our biggest industry in all of Santa Barbara, they need to work well for the people who have businesses there. We can't have vision guidelines, or whatever you want to call them, or zoning restrictions that stifle the flow of good economy. We have to, especially these days, I think we've all learned, that to grow economically is very important, but we also have to be mindful of other things. And I'm not forgetting property owners, like Mr. Fell mentioned, my family owns a couple of properties on the road. So property owners need to benefit from everything that we do there. So everybody needs to benefit, and if we have restrictions that benefit some but not others, that is not the goal, I think, of anybody. And so the goal of our association is to work with as many people as possible to get things revised, because although some people might find the way that things are right now to be advantageous, there are a good many people who think that the way that things are right now is very disadvantageous, especially over the long run. There's not any projects, really, but more than one or two in the works right now, but over the next five, 10 years, it's a very nice area, and business owners are going to be looking at that area to develop. And if we go up to, you know, 45 feet, and I own a big building, but I own a small building too, if we go up to 45 or even 35 feet across the board, or even, you know, a lot of buildings going up that much, it will change the character of the area. And I've said all along for the past several years, being President, what is then going to distinguish us from places like State Street? We will not be able to compete with those places. And so the economy in our business area will suffer long-term. So we need to develop something that makes sense all around, and not just economically, but aesthetically and environmentally. Right now, Coast Village Road, from what I'm understanding, from Montecito, or from Montecito Water, is kind of at its limit. Now, if we grow and grow and grow, get bigger and bigger buildings, how does that actually make sense? It just doesn't. We are almost maxed out, it seems, some days, traffic-wise. If we grow and grow and grow, how is that going to work? If people have the answers for that, then maybe we should just grow and grow and grow. But until we find those answers, we need to approach things, I think, wisely. And to say that we shouldn't do anything, or that, you know, some of the proposals in the vision plan, which came directly from the community, should be kind of tossed out or not taken a serious look at, is, I think, just being unrealistic about the situation before us. As far as semi-rural versus not semi-rural, I don't know what the definition is either. I don't really think, I think that's kind of nitpicking. I understand that the vision plan says that, and maybe that's part of the vision plan, that needs to be revised with help from the city, working with us and everyone involved in the community to get something established that really makes good sense, every single word of the way. But that's not really the point. The point is, is we noticed that there is a special character there, we want to do something to preserve that special character as we grow as a community, and grow in many ways, but grow wisely. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. And I do want to acknowledge that the Commission did receive a letter from Jamie Brown, representing the High Road Neighborhood Watch, with similar concerns regarding sort of lack of notification and involvement of the other neighbors, so.
Chair Bartlet, may I comment?
Chair Bartlet, may I comment on that?
Yes.
This was not a notice-public-hearing type of item. This is really an informal discussion opportunity with the Planning Commission. It came up for a couple of reasons. One is that we did work on the coordinated review process, which I'd like to clarify for Ms. Bridley's question. That is active, mutually agreed to, and will be used whenever appropriate. We're not in a waiting mode on that procedure. And I hadn't really had the opportunity to talk with the Planning Commission about this effort, and so that was something we wanted to bring to the Planning Commission. And then also, just having had ongoing discussions with the Coast Village Business Association, and wanting them to have a few moments of your time and of the ABR's time to say, here's this document that we've worked on, and we're really interested in seeing this move forward soon, if at all possible, and I've been the main one talking with them. I thought there was time on your agenda, it's a discussion item, this is not a formal initiation. You happen to be a very important public body of the city, and so, of course, anything that goes on your agenda is important, and people will take notice of. But I would, in my view, have been sending, yet again, more mixed messages that people aren't getting about this, if I had noticed it as some form of initiation of guidelines, or something that we're ready to hear from the full community about, because quite frankly, we're not. And the guidelines as a whole are not part of this project description. The general plan acknowledges that the Business Association has done some work, and there are policies in the general plan that call for strengthening and enhancing the development and design review process, and there are specific ideas outlined, including considering special design overlays for a number of areas, including Coast Village Road. So, even though this may be a difficult conversation, I thought it was appropriate to have it. It's not meeting people's expectations on either side. Have heard clearly from members of the Business Association that they don't understand why it's not already adopted, and I've heard from community members, and you did today too, why are you talking about this? We haven't been noticed. So, the reason we're talking about it is because, like the Planning Commission, to spend a few moments, knowing what has gone on out in the community, and thinking about that when we do come forward, also looking at the general plan. That was the direction I understood to have received from the council, and so I want to take an opportunity to do that with you.
Great. That really helps. Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the commissioners? Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. First, I want to talk, I want to thank Mr. Bole for bringing his expertise and coordinating ability to put this, these thoughts into something that can be read and utilized. It always helps to have, as you described it, someone who is an architect and knows how the policies work, to help a neighborhood put together a draft document. So I thank you for that. I certainly think that, at some point, the Coast Village Road area would be flagged for a design guideline district, similar to the Upper State Street area, more suburban, perhaps, than semi-rural, but I think it's premature today to be having this dialogue. I'm troubled by the lack of noticing to a broader section, but I understand Ms. Weiss's explanation of how that would make things even more complex than just having a simple discussion today. But the fact that we don't have property owners here, and that homeowners aren't here, makes me think it's kind of a limited discussion. And it makes me think, well, what about all the other parts of town that have been working hard? The Mesa Association, I think, has had six or eight meetings. You're telling us you've had two, and look where you're here already. Upper East Side has had six meetings, and we have a long stretch on the Upper East Side of State Street, and we're not here. You know, the Upper East isn't here making a presentation. So, I just think the discussion is premature. I think it's clear that Coast Village Road will have its, a district and its guidelines separated out for its own unique character. It's in the coastal zone as well, so there'll be extra layers of review on that. And I have other questions and comments, but really, my main comment is that it seems very premature. I would put this into something closer along the sustainable neighborhood plans, or flag it for a special district, as other areas of town have been as well. And I do want to applaud the thinking and the thoroughness in the Coast Village Road document. I especially like the forward-thinking in terms of the pedestrian amenities. Coast Village Road is asking for pedestrian and sidewalk enhancements, where in other parts of the city, we're hearing people protest them. So, I think you're definitely on the right track. I like the thinking very much, but it's way too early for any kind of adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Ms. Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too would like to commend the group that got together and did include at least part of the community that's concerned, but clearly, you do need to work with the, more of the property owners. I understand Mr. Kopus and his family own property there, and he's been involved, but you do need to get more people involved. Although, I'm thinking, Ms. Jacobs mentioned the Mesa effort, that is included in the discussion, in the draft EIR, and that was not, my impression is that it was basically the architects that got together and came up with these ideas, so they did have big meetings. Okay. Okay. Well, then, you need to do more of that, and I certainly, for one, would be happy to see what you can develop, but it does, Coast Village Road does have its own character, and I can appreciate your desire to continue that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. Ms. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yep, it takes a lot of work, and a lot of meetings, and a lot of input from everyone, and I think it's great that you have started this dialogue, but I'm right along with Ms. Jacobs. I think, I think that, you know, what we're doing here today is interesting, but we are premature. I understand the need, and I participated in the Mesa meetings, some of them, and I'm very familiar with the process. And, yes, we were very fortunate to have a group of architects who donated a lot of time, but they also listened carefully, and then came back with things that helped people understand and say, oh, wow, yeah, yeah, that's it. So, and it's, it isn't in a series of guidelines, it's a loose sort of a thing, and what you're proposing is not a loose sort of a thing. One of the things that I think is a conundrum to me, is I think it's really great that we work regionally, and we work between city and county, but I don't, I'm concerned about building up so many layers in the approval process that someone can't wade through, so that suddenly you don't have a courtesy review, everybody ends up with the ability to say no. I just think it confuses the, I don't want to introduce confusion to the development process. I think we want clarity with the guidelines, enough so that there's not, so that we don't introduce conflict, or so many layers of approval, that everybody just throws up their hands and lets the termites eat the wood on Coast Village Road. So, it's just not that sort of a, you know, I'm very concerned about that, the steps and the insulation we provide along the way. I hope I'm saying that right, but, you know, we've worked very hard to have, we don't hear it anymore, but I used to get to go to city meetings, or city little in-services on customer service, making the process go, not creating obstructions, and this just is like, okay, let's, it's like quarter-roaring a highway, you know? Okay, we have a highway, we want it to be graciously done, but we don't want to rip out the pavement and cross layers of wood on it, so that it's difficult to cross. We want, I just, you know, I want, I really understand what's going on and what you need and your desires. And I want, I'm all for facilitating a neighborhood dream. I think that's a great thing. And so, I think, for me, at this point, and this is just a, it's just, we're informal here, as you say, there hasn't been a lot of notice, this is just the first turnout, and I understand that of the guidelines, or of the wishes, let's put it that way at this point. But I really, those are my, my thoughts are, that the more we can keep the process simple, the more usable and clear the guidelines are, and be careful with the definition. Semi-rural, it's not. It's really not. There's a lot of hard surface there. It's not semi-rural. I lived in semi-rural. There's no dust on your feet. This is gentle urban, or gracious urban, or soft urban, or a candidate for form-based development, for form-based codes. There's all kinds of ways to approach it, but semi-rural, right there, I just said, oh. And it just threw a little flag up for the rest of the reading. So, anyway, thank you very much, and I appreciated the comment, the public comment letter from Jamie Brown. I think that was a very important piece of communication, and very informative. I'm going to say, continue with what you're doing in a, you know, just, these are just comments, and so, you know, I can't, we're not asked to do more than that today, and those are mine. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Urban light is the phrase you're looking for, I guess there's a history of traditional marketing there that'll work for you. I'll help kick this can down the road further with everybody else. I'm pretty much in consensus, but I just have a couple of comments. I really appreciate Mr. Fell's distinction of owners versus business tenants in the room. There's also a couple of you in the room that I know, too, that are in a struggle in the hospitality industry with just that same subject on an assessment issue. So, I know what a, I know what a tough battle that is, and on who's being represented and whose interests are at heart. What I've, I would, and I guess my input is that I would heartily endorse where you're going already with an expansion of that coordinated review. And the reason I say that is because what I've found, in particular, take an example like the Shapala Word, is that nothing's changed on Shapala from a zoning or process standpoint, but I'm pretty comfortable that buildings that have been put up there in the past couple of years might not be put up there in the next couple of years. And so, as part of the design and the review process, and neighborhood input, and greater involvement, and people paying better attention, the process changes according to that reason. And it continues then, though, within that framework, to retain the flexibility to be able to address broad community concerns, rather than small, focused groups within that context. And given that reason, I would say that it's more important to move forward on the coordinated and expanded review process than it is to look for limitations or rezones on restrictions in what you can do. I had a couple of comments on statistics, I heard. I always love listening to numbers. Perceptually, when I drive down Coast Village Road, I don't get the perception that on the ground, the FAR is 25%. That's just me. I'd be happy to be shown I'm wrong, but I just, when I drive through there, that's the way, that's the way I look at it. And I also, I don't, I don't know that the specific way to address density or a number of stories is through height. I still believe that it's, this is what you put seven people on different types of design and review boards in the city, who are all from varied backgrounds, and have different interests, and give them the flexibility to represent those interests, and put the best project they can out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. My comments, I'd like to sort of categorize into background and then process. From a background perspective, I think that a more formal discussion and planning process is long overdue for Montecito. I think it's in a high state of evolution, and I think over the decades, while it has attempted to accommodate an increase in population and traffic flow and needs, I think it's at a critical juncture where community stakeholders, both in Montecito, and then users and visitors to Montecito, need to come together to voice their interests, concerns, and requirements, because I think that Coast Village Road in particular is at a stretching point from a traffic circulation perspective, and I think the unique, special character of Coast Village Road as a part of Montecito's unique character is at a point of potential diminishment, incremental diminishment, if we are not vigilant, if the Montecito community, all stakeholder groups in the Montecito community do not weigh in to collaborate on some important long-term planning decisions. I think it was Ms. Atkins who mentioned stewardship. Though the city technically or legally is a steward of Coast Village Road and the Circle, I really see the Montecito community, all constituencies in the Montecito community, as the stewards, and I think that we should be the, sort of the last stop on the train of decision-making, because it needs to be, I think, your collective decision-making as to what you want Coast Village Road to be, for whom, and what that looks like into the future. I was concerned that there wasn't a greater public participation today, because even though this is an initial or preliminary discussion, I am very interested in hearing from all stakeholder groups in Montecito as to what they make of these, of the vision, of the proposed plan. And back in '08, I did attend some of the town hall meetings, Mr. Kopus, and I think they were admirably done, and I know Councilmember House was an important part of pulling them together with you. And I think that was a critical first step to bring the community together, to allow for listening and for responsiveness, but I don't think we're there, and I'm hoping that after today, Ms. Weiss, that the larger Montecito community can have the type of forums or communication vehicles they feel necessary to feel that they are a part of this. I would be very disappointed if some of these future planning decisions for Coast Village Road and the Circle were made by a few. I think that would not serve any of us well. So I'm hoping that this is an iterative process, that we have many more opportunities to come together, even if it's through the Planning Commission oversight for public hearings, but I'm truly hoping that this is just the beginning, because I think we don't want to jump into any fast and firm decisions about a change for Coast Village till it's really well thought out, with various stakeholders at the table reviewing and commenting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate that this item has come forward, because I think a lot of us do consider Coast Village Road special, and I've lived pretty adjacent to it for about 25 years, and my son manages one of the more prominent businesses on Coast Village Road, and it's really where I go for any type of commercial use. So I consider it almost my neighborhood. But I do agree that the semi-rural is not the right categorization. I mean, there's only two or three parcels out there that are not developed, and I think proposals that come forward and make most of the existing development legal non-conforming is perhaps, you know, going a bit too far, and I think there's probably better examples that we can look toward into how to implement guidelines that would actually dovetail with what we're doing throughout the city, and not creating special rules just for one area. Granted, there may be certain circumstances that are different, but I think we're looking for what's common with what we're doing, and what the vision is in the rest of the community, and let's latch on to those, and then there may be some specific items, and I'm thinking almost like what we did with the Outer State Street study. with the Outer State Street study, where, you know, the, the north side of the road is handled different than the south side. There's, there's certain site-specific elements that need to be addressed, and I think that you can perhaps have an overlay that addresses that, that's really specific to that neighborhood. But let's, let's not confuse all the rules. And I know, through the Plan Santa Barbara process, we were hoping to even evolve into some sort of FAR-based metric, and I know Tom Belay actually worked on the subcommittee with us, so we were trying to sort of introduce that idea, and it's, it's a bit too complex even to get into Plan Santa Barbara where we are now, and to try and bring forward a rigid FAR-type metric that we don't have anywhere else in the city at this point, I think is very premature. I mean, you can look to other examples that have been maybe handled in a different way. Even Outer State Street, where you have the SD2 zone, you know, you can do a, a three-story building, but you have to follow the parameters of developing a two-story project that complies with all the rules with no modifications to establish your, your development boundary. So, I think there's other mechanisms to get there that aren't reinventing the wheel. So, I think there's other avenues to be pursued, and I think we need, you know, the landowners, and I think we need the adjacent Montecito neighbors really at the table so we can really have the full discussion. I, I appreciate that those that have the businesses are, you know, certainly one attribute of what we're dealing with, but I think we need all the players to have a lively discussion. And I'm surprised that there's so few people here, so I understand why that is. I mean, we all acknowledge that Coast Village Road is special, and we want to protect it, but let's look to the things that we all have in common that we can add to some sort of a checklist for design review. I mean, design review is getting much more scrutiny in all areas of the city, and if there's specific items that are peculiar to Coast Village Road, then perhaps we need to have, you know, some sort of a guideline developed. But I think to come up with all new metrics on how we determine building heights and floor area ratios, I think we need to be more consistent with what we're doing throughout. So, I would encourage this process to continue, but I think we just need a broader audience, and we'd be happy to have it back, perhaps in another venue, or, you know, in a coordinated session with the, you know, as part of this coordinated review process that we've been talking about. So, but I appreciate that at least it's been initiated here and that there's a start of dialogue. And I think you can look to some of the examples of the Mesa Architects and the other neighborhoods that have been organizing, and let's, let's try and handle those in a more consistent fashion. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlet. To pick up on one of your comments, I would be in favor, Ms. Weiss, if you think this would be feasible, for us to sit in, for this Planning Commission to sit in, perhaps on a Montecito Planning Commission hosted forum for both business and residential stakeholders in Montecito, to hear the comments, to hear the questions and concerns, rather than possibly this commission being on the tail end of a process and communication that may go on outside of our knowledge in Montecito. And perhaps that's at the discretion of the commissioners that happen to be available on that day and have that interest. I would like to, personally, I would like to stay close to the discussion, the communication within the Montecito community, without being an impediment or being too heavy-handed as a part of the process, because we don't need to add a layer of bureaucracy, I think, as Commissioner Larson might have mentioned. We do want to support streamlining, but not be too distant to the process.
Chair Bartlet? I'll try to provide some context and clarity to this. What we have is a community group, like the Mesa Architects, like neighborhood associations, that for, for many years now, has been engaged in looking at the road, and they have special art fairs, and wanted improved trash cans, resulted in project, public projects along the Circle with enhanced parking. There, it's a very active and vital part of our community, and this group has been involved in many important projects. So, I think they were encouraged by the Plan Santa Barbara process to say, okay, we're going to get together and talk about what our vision is. And then, as I said before, they were also responding to a new project in, in their neighborhood that really caused some concern. And I think we all want to be supportive of that. But where I see that we are right now with, with this community group and the broader Montecito area, I go back to the general plan. I, I don't have a work item on this, this proposal. This, I don't consider the Coast Village Business Association's draft semi-rural design guidelines to be a city project at this time, beyond its recognition for long-term planning. And there are, as we've talked about, many community interests in many special neighborhoods, and the desire to improve multiple-family design guidelines, for example, has been in our housing element for going on 10 years. So, I've tried to have encouragement, but practical expectations on the part of the city, because this is our big project right now, and the council is going to prioritize implementation of the general plan, I hope, at the big, broad level first, to make sure we have our zoning in order, if we're changing our density standards. We've got big-level policy development work to still focus on, and I've said that over and over again, while still wanting to encourage, as I think you all are, that a community group can continue to have community discussions. But I just think we should be very aware that that leads to an expectation, which is already here, that the city should be doing its formal review of this work at some point soon, and we're, I'm just very, very concerned about that. Commissioner Schwartz, you're suggesting that maybe the Montecito Planning Commission would be a good forum, and that we could weigh in. I, you know, I don't know if Ms. Black wants to say something about that, but again, there are practical and administrative considerations, like even today, scheduling something on your agenda. What does that signal? Where is, I have no idea if, where this is on the radar in terms of the Montecito Planning Commission, so perhaps you could weigh in on that.
Yes, thank you. Diane Black with the County of Santa Barbara. I, I like the, the idea that your suggestion encompasses that as a coordinated review process, but it seems that any planning for Coast Village Road really needs to be centered on the city's process. We've developed a review mechanism for the Montecito Planning Commission to simply provide a forum for residents of Montecito to come to the, to the Montecito Planning Commission and provide comments that will then be forwarded to your commission and your decision-making process. So, it, it would seem odd to sort of start a design review process of Coast Village Road at the county in the context of the Montecito Planning Commission, when it's really the city and ultimately the city council that would be making decisions about that. But we'd be, you know, I'm sure the Montecito Planning Commission would be happy to engage with your commission and the design review process of the city and provide helpful comments, but I think it really is a city process. So, that's my comment.
Great.
And it's not in our budget either.
Thank you. For participating, thanks. Mr. Jordan, at one point, you had your light on, but it's been answered. Okay, great.
Bruce, did you, Mr. Bartlet, Chair Bartlet, have you reopened public comment by letting Ms. Black come up? I mean, on this issue?
Okay. I can, I can reopen it if there's another comment that you need to make.
Well, I just think this, when this issue came up, it was former city council member, how can I forget her name so fast? E.F. Falconi, had brought it up in connection with the Coast Village Road project, and suggested that this idea be implemented. But I think, as a resident of the city and as a practitioner of land use in the city, I can't imagine that I've got to deal with two planning commissions in order to deal with a project. I mean, it's tough enough to deal with you guys, which are very good planning commissioners, but it's just the whole idea that all of a sudden, this planning commission gets to say what it thinks, and now it comes to you, and what are you gonna say about what they said? And I just, I just think it is really unfair to the property owner who's dealing with a piece of property that's in the city, in Santa Barbara, and that is not in the county.
Great, thank you. Ms. Larson?
No, that's for me.
Sure. I keep.
I know.
That's true.
I have a, a comment on that, because that does pertain to something in my long list of notes, which I'm not actually gonna spill out, but in the January 2010 document that you have given us, the coordinated review process, do we have agreements like this with Goleta regarding airport development, or with the county regarding other parts of the city that, that reach up to parts of the county?
Yes, we do, and thank you for asking that question, because I did want to clarify that it was not just the council member Falconi one time suggesting this, but this has been a long-time-going request, and including requests from Planning Commission, to coordinate better with the county on projects that are going on. For example, there's a hotel project proposed at the end of State Street, and I've had very good dialogue with the county planner and the applicant there, and the request that the project be brought before this commission for a conceptual review. Also...
Is it formulated in this way, and as a formal agreement, in the same way, or is it more collegial? And how does, I mean, the Upper State Street Hotel is a good example.
Yeah. To date, it's been more collegial, and then I did want to also mention that this was prompted as well by First District Supervisor Salud Carbajal requesting that there be something more formal in this instance. I would just like to point out that the way we're thinking of it is, it's not going before the Montecito Planning Commission as if they're a decision-making body, but as a forum for discussion. I think of, this is an extreme example of like what we encourage in the neighborhood preservation guidelines. Talk to your neighbors. It, it's just, it is, it's quite a bit different, but it's the same concept, is that we're trying to invite community discussion and input into the planning process.
Well, not to get into legal stuff, but it does specify review and by the Montecito Planning Commission, and I think that is of concern to me, and it should perhaps say courtesy review, or some other more descriptive term, because what you're describing to me is, and what I've been familiar with on the commission when we have looked at, say, the San Marcos Foothills project, has been kind of a comment and early-on concept review, not a project review. And I think they're kind of different animals, and we should specify the earlier concept review, concept courtesy review, as the kind of review we're talking about, so that everyone understands, both the project proponents and the, anyone else who's listening in. And just to answer my question, would this be the only kind of written, formal document that we have with any other entity? We don't have one with the City of Goleta?
Um, no, not for project review with the City of Goleta. I know that there have been memorandums of understanding and coordination around, significantly around the Goleta slough, but I'm, no, I'm not aware of something like this exactly for the City of Goleta, that I think it would pertain to the specific plan area. I'd have to go back and look into the, as we develop the specific plan, but I don't recall that there is.
I would just encourage staff to look at the agreements we have with our fellow city in Goleta, and, and with the county, and, and work to replicate a level playing field in terms of how we review projects regionally, and not create something new. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's a good point. I will briefly reopen public comment for Danny Kopech.
Pertain to this conversation, I think it's, it's interesting what was suggested, and I know that it's been suggested before. The thing that makes Montecito and Coast Village Road so unique, and maybe other places in town are like this, and I just, I don't know, but I'm not sure that anywhere is, is that you have a finger of the city that's surrounded by county. And so, those county people sometimes, because of the nature of cities versus counties, struggle to have a voice with the decision-makers in the city government. So, when they struggle to have a voice, and their area that they mostly use, most of the people who use this little finger of the city are the county people. So, when they have a struggle to, to have their voice heard, it might be an interesting idea to, to consider what you were suggesting, in having the Architectural Board of Review, or somehow, some way, give the, the people of Montecito perhaps an easier time in voicing their opinions of the matter. I also agree with Mr. Fell, that we don't want to overcomplicate things for developers. We've been through it a couple of times already, Sid, but my family owns property on the street. One of my properties is well-established, and the other one I would like to do development on. And I know other property owners, they're friends of mine. I want to stick up for everyone that I can, and it's important for us to be fair to everybody, including property owners who have it hard enough as, as it is sometimes. I think all of this lends to the idea that whether it's, you know, sooner or later, obviously there's been some suggestions to us to have more meetings and, and try to get as many people incorporated as possible into those meetings, which we've tried before, but we'll try some more. But it, it just kind of emphasizes the need for something for this particular area that is more formal, whether it's guidelines or whatever it is. If we had something that were more formal, it would make your job easier, the city council person's job easier, Architectural Board of Review's job easier, Mr. Fell's job easier, his client's job easier. It just, it doesn't make any sense that someone who went through such a difficult time wouldn't want to have things cleared up a little bit. And I think we are, we saw from that project that there is such debate in the town, that there are so many, you know, there's so many different, not so many different sides, but so many people are passionate about, about that area, that we need to find something that, that works a little bit better for maybe not everyone, but most of the people out there. And right now, that doesn't seem to be what we have. So, hopefully, over time, we can, we can get that with the help of associations like ours, the Montecito Association, working together with city representatives. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And you are invited to Plan Santa Barbara in three weeks, so that's a great venue. Ms. Weiss, do you need any other feedback from us on this?
No, that's, that's been good. Thank you for the discussion. I think it will be helpful to all, all people involved.
Great, thank you. With that, we will move on to our administrative agenda. And first up are the committee and liaison reports. Any update on the staff hearing officer, Ms. Larson?
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, the staff hearing officer had a, I have two reports. The first one from March 24th. And the first one, there were four items on the agenda, three mods, they were all T-Fire rebuilds, three of them were. And then there was one CDP with a parking mod request, and the CDP was for 222 Helena Avenue, which, if you'll recall, was living green at one time, a business there, and it's converting to a restaurant. So, there's a, there, there's a proposal for a change in use, and, and the staff hearing officer was very careful about the parking, and she did approve the project with some revised conditions, which I thought was pretty good. The condition... The conditions required that the proposed hours of operation of each of the existing buildings that utilized the shared parking lot be recorded against each of the affected parcels, so the hours of operation limitations would be clear to the future tenants. And she also revised the conditions to specify the number of allowed restaurant and bar seats and required that the parking lot be resurfaced and striped according to the approved plans in the city's archives. And then on 4/7, April 7th, the unusual thing that happened was that right before the meeting, and I wasn't privy to that part, but in her little recap of it she sent me, she said the applicant for three time extensions requested a two-week continuance. Concerns were raised regarding the fact that they were requesting a three-year time extension when the map doesn't expire until May 2012. So she granted the continuance, so there's only one project reviewed, which was at 32 Rosemary Lane. So that's what's going on with the staff hearing officer, and I can't wait to hear about Bevmo. Because I did watch that. I don't know if, I hope, I'm not the liaison, I'm the, I'm the substitute, or, you know, the backup person. But, did you watch it, Bruce?
I have not watched the replay yet.
Oh, let me help you out.
No, no.
Bevmo, I watched the ABR meeting for Bevmo as an item, and there were concerns from the neighborhood regarding traffic in the alley, deliveries in the alley, backing, backing up and the alarm, the beeping alarms going on in the alley next to the residences. So, and some of, one of the, in particular, one member of the ABR was very concerned about them not using a front entry to the store. And so it ended up that they're, they are not going to use a front, create a front entry for the store, they're going to use one oriented towards the parking lot. And, and then the color of the building is going to change to be a solid color. There is a tree being removed, but they're putting in a, I think a 24-inch box tree, if I recall, to replace what's, we're going to lose the landscaping in the front of the parking lot. So, and with a different proposal coming in. So that, and they're tearing out the building in the back that was used for the lifestyle portion of Thomasville. So the neighbors have been very concerned, and it's not coming to us. This is it, stops at the ABR. So, you know, it, that, I'm sure there's a rebroadcast or you can look at that. I think everybody should because I think it's important for the, for the area for Upper State. Thanks.
Great, I appreciate that. Yes, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you. I wanted to ask about the Bevmo project because it's an unfortunate turn of events for the streetscape in that area. Doesn't at all meet the Upper State Street Design Guidelines to face onto the sidewalk, create a nice pedestrian experience along State Street, and I'm really wondering how they could be making this decision so much against the guidelines. Any thoughts on that, Ms. Wiest or commissioners?
I, I'm aware this was the second review, and at the first review, the ABR did look at asking them to enhance the, there's a, there really isn't an on-the-street entrance now, the, the, I think there's like a, kind of a corridor, a path, and you go back into the front door. And my understanding is they were asking them to enhance that at the first meeting, but I'm not really sure what the design was. Did it receive an approval? Were you aware?
I'm trying to remember that part.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to follow it. But it should, it should be reviewed for consistency with those guidelines. It is a remodel, you know, a minor remodel of an existing building. The most significant change is the demolition of that outbuilding and the reconfiguration of the garage. I'm sorry, but I could, at any time, if you wanted to come by the building, we could show you the plans, or I could try to remind Danny to bring them to a future meeting. I wasn't aware that it received an approval. I'm not sure. This was the second review.
I don't, honest, I don't remember. I just was watching it for just basically interest, and I was pretty sure that, that others would too, because it is, you know, it is a struggle, and I sat on ABR for many years, and it, you know, you, it's the classic between the applicant and the board and, and the wishes of what's going on. So there was a suggestion that, that there's a recessed part in the front of the building where there is a nice window, but that be turned into an entry and it could be enhanced. And Bevmo is not willing to do that. So, and they were asked to come back with plans. They had some red on a shadow line up along the, along the roof, it looked like a red element of stripe, and the windows were turquoise appearing in the, in the drawings. And so they actually asked if, that was Mr. Manson-Hing, if, if these were the actual colors. So they were told to come back with the actual colors, they were told, no. But I think, I think the city, I think the, the people who live behind the alley have raised valid concerns, and, and it was noted that many deliveries are made to businesses, and the deliveries, you know, initiate on State Street, they don't use the alley. So some, some receive early delivery or deliveries during the day, parking along State. So I, there, that's just what the meeting was about, and, and you can go from there. But I do recommend everybody look at this particular application because I think it's going to be a very significant impact.
Well, as a commissioner, I've been very interested and supportive of the Upper State Street guideline, guidelines, and Upper State Street does not have an active business association like the kind that Coast Village Road, for example, has. And so there's no, there's no watchdog trying to maintain a good business environment along that stretch of road. And the Upper State Street Design Guidelines, and I think I probably went to 10 meetings on that one, are there to, to help protect the neighborhood and the city from inappropriate development. And what I'm hearing about this approval through the ABR is that it's not following the design guidelines, and it's one of the few pieces of property in that segment that actually could, because it's large enough. It's not one of the tiny shotgun stores that are across from McKenzie Park that really don't have the ability to do much with their landscaping. This property does. So, I don't know, could you ask Mr. Cotto to, to take a look at it and check it for consistency with the Upper State Street Design Guidelines and encourage the ABR to, to support those guidelines? Thanks.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also concerned about this, particularly when Commissioner Larson says that they're losing the landscaping on State Street.
Well, there's a change. There'll be a change in the landscaping, a change. I can't, I, you know, I had to go by it to see again what, how extensive the landscaping that exists is, and it's quite extensive in the front of the building. But I only could see the plans, you know, on the television for a minute. I can't, I can't speak to anything, but they were very concerned about the removal of a mature tree. And so they saw that there was another species of tree or another tree being put in, and the landscape architect for the ABR has not reviewed the landscape plans. There's been no landscape comments. So there's not, you know, there's nothing to go by yet, so that it hasn't been reviewed.
Thank you.
Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlett. I am as interested in and concerned about the project as Commissioner Jacobs. And when I learned that the property was turning over, I thought we would have a prime opportunity to ensure that with the new design, working with the new owners, they would not only be adhering to the Upper State Street Guidelines, but could enhance this area of State Street. And what I'm hearing thus far, not having attended the meetings as you have, Commissioner Larson, is that we may not be moving in that direction. And so I would want to know, when is the next ABR meeting? Is there any formal communication through you, Commissioner Larson, or, you know, as a commission, since it's not going to come to us, that we stay on top of this, possibly get out ahead of it so that we can ensure that we don't lose the opportunity to, to enhance through this building, that portion of Upper State Street?
Great, thank you. Ms. Larson?
I'll, I'll be real brief. I didn't attend the meeting, just to be clear. I just, I caught it on television and, and it was, it was just starting, so I just let the TV roll while I was working. And, and that's how I saw the item. You know, it wasn't, I wasn't sent there or anything special. It's just that, you know, it just, I brought it up to us though because of the State Street Guidelines and the amount of effort that we've put into that area, and, and the need, I think, the need to encourage our boards to tell applicants what we need, what we want. I mean, we just had a group of people in here doing the same thing. What we need, what we want, and this is how it should be. Then the applicant come back and says, no, we're not going to do that, and then it doesn't get done. I think we need to stand our ground somewhere. And, and I also mentioned it because of the amount of neighborhood concern, and it is, it's not like a big gang of people turning out or a big group, but the people who live directly behind it who are impacted. So I just encourage you to watch for yourself and, and have a look, because that's what it takes, is lots of eyes. Thanks.
I appreciate your comments on that. I think a lot of the ones that we have seen have been where a project comes forward under the guise of a tenant improvement, and therefore it really doesn't receive a lot of scrutiny. But I think what's different in this case is actually it's an intensification of use, going from a warehouse type of use to retail, and perhaps we need to be sure, you know, if we have the triggers to then kick it in for the Upper State Street Design Guidelines because of the intensification. I think it started out looking like a tenant improvement, but then to make the parking comply, you have to tear down one building and then rip off part of the back of the existing building, so it just cascades on you. So, anyway, I agree. I think we need to monitor this one closely, you know, for the next review. Are there other committee or liaison reports? Ms. Schwartz?
Thank you, Chair Bartlett. This morning, I attended the Downtown Parking Committee meeting regarding Plan Santa Barbara. In their May 13th meeting, they will be discussing potential parking impacts, and Rob Dayton will be giving a presentation to them on that matter. So they are going to become more involved in the process beginning next month. On the finance side, Bob Samario was there from City Finance, and once again, there was a sobering discussion of budget to revenue. They're holding their own, they're doing pretty well still in the budget arena in terms of fiscal year-to-date projections and actuels, but revenues continue to be an area of concern for downtown parking, as you might imagine, from the merchants. But they are, if I say hesitant, that would put it mildly, they are very reluctant to see any fee increases to parking at the parking lots. They unanimously agreed that this will drive away customers from downtown, will encourage customers to move to Outer State Street or Goleta for their shopping, and at a time when many of the merchants are just hanging on, this is, this is not appealing to them. In the end, I think they're going to be looking to sort of hold their own in terms of their reserves and their revenues. They're concerned as the city council begins to review the budget deficit and makes decisions, sort of gap closure decisions, that some of the reserves that the Downtown Parking Committee has could be tapped to make the city whole, and I think the city council will be hearing from the committee in terms of their priorities as to, you know, their good efforts to date not being used in that fashion. And then just on a separate note, yesterday, and I know we were all invited to this, I, along with Councilmember Bendy White, attended, attended the celebration down at the Vulcan Materials Company. They're the ready-mix concrete company. Though I had driven by that plant for many years at Three Caix Cesar Chavez, I'd never been there, they are a phenomenal company. They are environmentally very advanced. They seem to be a wonderful sort of corporate citizen in Santa Barbara, always looking to do what they do better and more environmentally friendly. They have this, and I'll just close by saying, they have this new permeable concrete that they've now installed up at Westmont where, you know, instead of runoff, surface waters can be appropriately and environmentally soundly absorbed below the concrete surface into the ground. So I just think they're doing a tremendous job, and it was, it was very informative. I didn't know much about ready-mix concrete, and it was great to meet a company that's a good corporate citizen, and they are leasing their land from Marburg, who owns that whole kind of strip down there. So, thank you. That was, that was an interesting opportunity.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case anybody's wondering what that slide is up there on the screen, that is the new terminal, taken from right in front of the existing terminal. And if you could go to the next slide, I think it gives the whole, oh, I'm sorry, that was, this is from in front of the old terminal, and then let's go back to the other one. For some reason or others, nope. Well, I guess it still is. Anyway, that, on the, somehow, part of it's getting cropped off. That gives you an idea of how big it's going to be. The, the draft EIR and the general plan says that the terminal is going to be ready late this year, which of course made me considering this is the way it looks. I thought that couldn't quite be right. So I talked to Hazel Johns, the Assistant Director of the Airport, and it will be about a year before it's in use. There were some delays at the beginning, which turned out to be very advantageous. Their bid was about 20, the lowest bid was about 29% below the estimates because of the effects of the downturn in the economy. They also were able to utilize some economic stimulus funding relating to bonds and interest rates and so on. So that delay turned out to be helpful. There has been some additional delay because of the rain, but otherwise, it's coming along very well.
Great, thank you for the update. That's very helpful. Any other reports? With that, I will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you very much.